Alright, good morning everyone. I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on television, on Comcast Channel 99, and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Eva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Towles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Eccles is absent this week. Councilwoman Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Enrich?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is up for business. I'm going to ask Keith Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the virtual allegiance.
Good morning Father, we thank you again for this day. We thank you for the blessings of the day, Father. We thank you for all that you've done, promised to do, and Father just continue to do on a daily basis. Father, we thank you for Jesus and forgiveness first and foremost. We pray, Father, that you give us wisdom, guidance, knowledge, and sermon as we carry forward in the businesses at hand. Father, we pray that we please you with all that's said and done, and we give you thanks in advance in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Safety Committee Meeting, Work Session, and City Council Meeting held on April 25th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of April 21st through the 27th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Mayor is out of town today, so I have the pleasure and opportunity to present my presence at Rotary, one of the proclamations, actually I have two today. Whereas the Gadsden Rotary Club was founded May 11th, 1917, making it the oldest service organization in Gadsden, and whereas the Gadsden Rotary Club has made notable contributions to our community, including the Gadsden Library Park, Habitat for Humanity, Children's Hospital, Critical Care Transport, the Humane Society of Etowah County, Salvation Army, and the United Way Agency contributions and projects. And whereas the Gadsden Rotary Club has partnered with local schools and the Gadsden Library to improve literacy and provide educational opportunities for all students by sponsoring an anti-bullying rally, providing dictionaries to third grade students in Etowah County, purchasing kitchen equipment for the beautiful Rainbow Cafe, the Rotary Award for fifth grade students, establishing an interact club at Gadsden City High School, and providing scholarships for deserving students. And whereas the motto of Rotary is "Service Above Self," this motto inspires Rotarians to serve humanity beyond their local communities. Gadsden Rotarians are serving humanity through projects like Polio Plus, which strives to eradicate polio. And whereas on May 11th, 2017, the Gadsden Rotary Club will celebrate 100 years of service. Now, therefore Sherman Gotten, as Mayor of the City of Gadsden, Alabama, on behalf of the City Council, does hereby congratulate the Gadsden Rotary Club on its centennial and extend our appreciation for his service to Gadsden and this community. Steve was here when it began back in...
Let me first recognize we have several Rotarians here today. Y'all can stand, I'd like to, John in the back, Bubba here, he is our Assistant District Governor, and Leslie Horst taking pictures, and Stephanie, Ashley Sherman is a Rotarian, and Bob Eccles is a past Rotary President for Gadsden Rotary Club. So a lot of Rotarians here, and appreciate the city for acknowledging us with this proclamation. Invite you to attend our centennial celebration, May 11th, at the Gadsden Coffee Club at lunch. John Merrill will be our speaker, and look to have a good turnout, and thank you for the proclamation.
Steve, before you go, how does one become a Rotarian?
If you'll call me, I'll be glad to make you a Rotarian. You know what would make it happen?
Is Mr. Matthew Schroeder here?
Right here.
Come on up, Mr. Schroeder. Whereas motorcycles are increasingly used as a regular means of transportation, and whereas the motorcycle is an energy-efficient vehicle that reduces fuel consumption, traffic, and parking congestion, and whereas the motorcycle is an important form of transportation for commuting, touring, and recreation, and whereas as a matter of safety, it is necessary to develop appropriate driving habits to handle the vehicles on roadways, and whereas over the past 10 years motorcycle fatalities have increased 150% as reported in the United States Department of Transportation's fatality analysis report. And whereas to prevent injuries and deaths on the roadways, motorists and motorists must be vigilant in their efforts to share the road and ensure the safety of everyone. And whereas Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month raises public awareness for a lifetime of safe motorcycle riding. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Sherman Gotten, as Mayor of the City of Gadsden, does hereby proclaim May as Motorcycle Awareness Month. In witness thereof, he has set his hand on two, and caused the seal of the City of Gadsden to be affixed the second day of May in the year of our 2017 day.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Would you like to say? Yes. My name is Matthew Schroeder, and I'm the State Director of Dixie, Alabama, and I'd like to thank the City of Gadsden for the sixth proclamation we received for Motorcycle Awareness Month. Motorcycle fatalities on the increase nationally, and it seems locally, I wish everyone would just pay attention and just drive, and look twice and say bye. Thank you.
Thank you to both of those groups for all of the fine work that you do in the community. I take pride in being the one that introduced to the Mayor the first time, six years ago, the opportunity to do a proclamation for the motorcycle group. So we appreciate all that you do, and we definitely enjoy having you come up every year. And we do want to thank also the Rotary Club for their fine service. And it's always a great thing to recognize any group that's been around 100 years. I think with the exception of Mr. Eccles, nobody up here's been around 100 years. So we definitely appreciate their efforts and their work. Under unfinished business, we have item number 8A, which is an ordinance amending fiscal year, the fiscal year '17 budget reflecting receipt and appropriation of a grant. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. It relates to the $8,000 grant from the Etowah County Community Development Committee for construction of a sign identifying Bellevue Highlands to be located at the intersection of Mitchell Boulevard and Bellevue Drive. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 8B is an ordinance amending City Code Sections 74-233 and 74-263 regarding the back-to-school tax holiday. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. The state changed the time from the first full weekend in August to the third full weekend of July. This will bring us into compliance with the change for this year and all subsequent years. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 24 Comnack Avenue in District 6, Connie Herring and Dennis Gladden being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? If you would, sir, if you'll come to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Good morning. I'm Dad Charlie, and I'm the attorney for Ms. Herring. Mr. Gladden no longer is owning the property from my understanding. Ms. Herring has just sent me, asked me down here to come and ask y'all for it, that's like a 30-day extension. The house is in need of repair, we're not denying that, but she has, I think within the last several months or years, so has put new roof on the building. I think the glossy exterior stuff that needs to do, she's just some broken windows, she's going to get replaced, and some paint and stuff like that, but all we would ask would be like additional 30 days for her to either get the repairs down or make a decision to go ahead and let it be demolished. That's all we ask of the Council today.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Parson with the Building Department. We started our case in October of 2015, been no improvements, there are no permits in progress, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 3001 Shahan Avenue in District 6, Stephanie Swindle and Homecomings Financial Network, MERS, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Ma'am, if you would, just give us your name and address, please.
My name is Stephanie Swindle, my address is 1928 Lockland Road, I'm the owner of the house. What has gone on is we have been fighting with the mortgage company to tear the house down. Recently, they received the paperwork again for the third time, so we're in the process of trying to start tearing the house down again.
Okay.
I just need a little more time because it's been so hard with it.
How much time specifically, ma'am?
Oh, 30 days. My husband should have it pulled down.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a burned house, there was a demolition permit obtained in December, as you can see in the picture, the house has basically been brought to the ground. They're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance, but during the interim with the backlog, Public Works has will certainly honor the demolition permit by the owner and allow them to clean the property up. If that happens before Public Works gets out there, there's nothing of the city. Thank you.
Miss Swindle, did you catch all of that? Okay, alright, great, alright. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Checking.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, ma'am, I go by there all the time. It don't look like it would take a lot to finish that project up there, and the more you get done, if the city does beat you before you get through it, the less you'd have to pay. And hopefully, you know, you'll be able to get it by yourself, get it done, and save that money.
There's just been a lot going on. Fighting with the mortgage company to allow them to let me tear it down has been a nuisance and a headache in itself, and just a lot of things, but yeah.
Did you have insurance on it where that the insurance company would pay so much for demolition, removal of property?
No, we had insurance on it, but they won't pay for the demolition. My husband is doing it by himself. We've not, you know, my family's older, so they're unable to help right now, so he's doing the majority by himself. He's doing a good job from what he can get done, while working a full-time job. We just want it finished and done, and it is a nuisance for people around there, and I understand that, no problem, we're just trying to get it done.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt a resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for demolition that has already been performed, and we have four locations, and these are items 11 through 14 on your agenda. 1107 Bretwood Drive in District 3, $4,691.40. 1329 Hill Avenue in District 3, $2,541.40. 1335 Hill Avenue in District 3, $3,291.40. And 2310 Hill Avenue in District 6, $2,966.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all four resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all four resolutions, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all four.
Item number 15 is a resolution awarding bid number 3338 for HVAC replacement at the Gadsden Public Library Main Branch. The city engineer has recommended awarding the bid to State Line Mechanical LLC, and the amount is $310,000, $10,500. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Keith, is there anything you want to add to that?
Not in particular, just a little while on the works, so we're excited to get this one done. This will replace all the HVAC units in the main library, and there are several that, because of the different uses of that facility, so once we get this passed, we hope to certainly get the contract administration side done, and work should begin just by early summer. So hopefully we'll have some relief in there long-term very soon.
Okay, thanks, Keith. Alright, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 16 is a resolution appointing members to the Design Review Board. This appoints Gutierrez Gregory Hall for a term expiring June 30th, 2018, and Chris Williams and Ricky Hunter for terms expiring June 30th, 2019. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 17 is a resolution authorizing agreement with JBWNT for supplemental fee. This is for additional work to include a pedestrian signal and crosswalks at the Black Creek Parkway intersection on the widening and resurfacing project on South 11th Street. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 18 is an ordinance that was presented today for first reading, which is regarding transportation network companies. This recognizes TNCs and establishes a permit process with insurance and safety requirements for TNC companies such as Uber and Lyft. This ordinance was updated after it was reviewed in last week's work session, so we'll need to get a motion to substitute. I'd like to entertain a motion to substitute the corrected ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to submit the substituted ordinance, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to substitute.
Okay, so relative to the substituted ordinance, I'd like to present it today for first reading, and the council will vote on that next week. I'd like to also entertain a motion to suspend the rules and consider this today, if we may.
Objection.
Okay, so we do not have unanimous consent, and we'll hear it next week? New business, is there any new business?
Yes, I have an item from the engineer department concerning the Couso Landing supplement with coins in Carnegie Reynolds. I ask for unanimous consent.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known the saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
We do not have unanimous consent.
Alright, department reports, boards, committees.
I'm Jen Levington with Parks and Recreation Department, and I did want to give a report about things happening this weekend. Parks and Recreation is hosting the kids fishing rodeo at Marana Park and Pond. This is from 11:00 AM, I mean from 8:00 AM till 11:00 AM. We provide a fishing pole, tackle, bait, and a hot dog lunch with a drink, and this is for the first 275 kids that come and participate. I said this is for ages 5 to 12. Parents can assist kids but not fish themselves. This is for the children. A few other things being held in, on Parks and Recreation, City of Gadsden's facilities for Friday night at the Downtown Civic Center, we have the senior dance that's 55 and up, starts at 6:30. On Saturday at Naperville Falls at the Black Creek Trails, the Gadsden Runners Club is hosting their spring trail 5K and half marathon. At the sports complex, we have the DPA, which is youth baseball tournament. At Carver Center, we have the first Saturday starting at noon. Couso Landing, we have two tournaments, blessed enough, that's First Safe Lot, the American Bass Anglers, and Harrison Bass Club. And on Sunday at Convention Hall, we have a beauty pageant from infants to 18-year-olds, and that starts around 11:00 AM.
Jen, you want to talk a little bit about this past weekend's event?
This past weekend, I'm going to hold off and let Robert update everybody on the Mason Concert that was held at Couso Landing. He has more information on that, and was a very instrumental in the lead.
Okay, alright.
Hello, I'm Ray Wetzel with the Gadsden Museum of Art, and today after the council meeting, I want to invite everybody over to see all the changes that we have done to the museum. We have updated our children's classroom, and we are going to announce a list of summer camps, classes, and things we're going to offer from now on. We have over 70% increased our outreach to local schools, and you can come in, walk around before you go to lunch, and look at the new shows before First Friday, and please come see all the good work we do. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. I appreciate the council letting me speak. I'm Kay Moore, I'm director for downtown Gadsden. We do have First Friday coming back up again. We kicked off last month again for the year 2017. This year, this month should be a big month if the weather holds. It's funny when you look at different weather forecasts, how different they can be. You look at the Weather Channel, it says we've got a 50% chance of rain, and it's going to be 59 degrees as a high. If you look at our local TV stations around here, it says 69 as a high with only 20% chance of rain. So, you know, we always say we're going to, First Friday will go on, weather permitting, and unless there's bad weather, but we plan to have First Friday, we plan to have a great time. We've had a lot of calls, and we appreciate the support that we get from the City of Gadsden. This is a great event for our city. It puts our city in the spotlight around the Southeast. We've won different awards, twice we've won an award to be in the top 20 of the Southeastern events, so I think that's pretty amazing. So this month, we've got the classic cars coming in, we'll have our food vendors coming in, and then we've got a great musical lineup. We've got the Star Power Performing Arts at Second and Broad, we've got Damascus Road at Third and Broad, Stephen McCullough Band will be at Fourth and Broad, Alliance Quartet at Fifth, and they're always a big favorite, it's a gospel quartet, they're from Huntsville area, but one of the guys is from here, so they always like to come down. We have a lot of people that like to come and listen to them. And then we have the Ed Howard Band at Sixth and Broad, so the music's going to be great, we're going to have a lot of fun. It's going to kick off at 6 o'clock, we'll close the streets about 4:30 to let everybody get in and get settled, and from 6 to 9, we'll have First Friday. At 8:30, so it's got a little bit of overlap, the first summer concert series, and Jen, let me talk about this one because it's really a Parks and Recreation deal, but because it works so closely with First Friday, we've got the Purple Masquerade, which is a Prince tribute band. This should be a wonderful, wonderful entertainer. I think it's going to be something that's really, really great, we're really excited about that. So it's going to kick off and go from 8:30 to 10:30. So if you're not already tired when you leave First Friday, you can, there's another, at the amphitheater, there's another event that you can do there. You can bring your cooler and your dinner, and just sit back and relax and enjoy that. So that's going to be this coming Friday night, May 5th, and it's going to start at 6, and it'll be over at 10:30, if you take in everything that you can. Now the next weekend while I'm here, I'm going to take another minute or two to talk about our GAD about art. We've got about 20 artists that are going to be setting up on the streets, on Broad Street, from 10 o'clock to 4 o'clock on Saturday, May 13th. This is the Day of Mother's Day. We've got a good variety of painting, metal artworks, woodwork, a lot of different things, so the artists will be set up, and you'll be able to come and talk to them, so we'll be performing their crafts as they set up on the sidewalks too. So we hope you'll come out and hear them, and just enjoy, then shop at our local boutiques. It is Mother's Day the next day, gives you a great opportunity to buy that last-minute gift that you've forgotten, so. But our restaurants will be open, and we just want another way to bring people downtown. You know, we want to be an artsy community, and we're trying really hard, and Ray's still here, and Ray has helped a whole lot with this, and we want people to recognize downtown, recognize Gadsden itself as a place that you can come and do a lot of different things. So this is just another one of those things that we're going to have, and we hope that people will come out and shop and enjoy, and just stroll our streets downtown and have a good time. Any questions for anybody?
No, and again, just if you want to touch on this past weekend for just a second, Kay, I...
No, I'm going to let Robert do that.
Alright.
I'm going to let Robert do that.
Come on up, Robert.
He's the one that, yeah, I'm going to go sit down there, let him do that.
Alright, thanks, Kay. Thank you, Kay.
We waiting on you, Robert, let's go.
I should be here more often, I'd be a little more familiar with the program. My name's Robert Smith, I'm the insurance agent in the insurance facilities, and also downtown Gadsden board member, like they called you for the time today to make this address, because there's some people that need some big recognition in this city. Just over six months ago, Mr. Steve Gilbert came to me with the idea of a concert, called me in his office, and he said, "I think it's time that we did another concert here." I said, "You're crazy," but he said, "Do you think we could have one downtown?" I said, "Well, if we got enough money, we can do anything." Within three weeks, we had gotten with Kay Moore and Mr. Gilbert, within three weeks had raised enough money to fund the concert, all from donors from within this community and around this city. We went ahead and signed contracts with Anna Popovich, our headliner. Then became the tough part, where we're going to have this concert. Our initial thought was to have it downtown on the street of Broad Street. In meeting with Mayor Sherman Gotten, Frankie Davis, Shane Ellison, we changed the venue. In meeting with Mayor Sherman-Gatton, Frankie Davis, Shane Ellison, we changed the venue. We thought, what a perfect time to tie this end with the Boardwalk ribbon cut. So we did. They were very instrumental in pulling all the departments together to help make this happen. Public safety, my first meeting after we decided on the date and the venue was with Chief Carroll. Chief Carroll said, I think this is a great idea, but I've got some big concerns. I had a little heart skip because I knew we had a contract already going. He immediately said, relax, we got this, we'll figure it out, and we did. Gadsden Police Department, my first meeting was with Captain Kenner, also Lieutenant Hammons. Again, we've got some concerns, but we'll figure it out, and we did. The Edward County Sheriff's Department came in with help from Internal Security, they were fantastic, Lieutenant Tony Snow and all of his reserve officers. But you can't have a concert without infrastructure. Gadsden Public Works, Mike Hilton, Court Barber, 100% supportive in this endeavor. Gadsden Parks and Rec, Jen Withington, can't say enough good things about her, 100% support. Special thank you to the City of Rainbow City, they allowed us to borrow the power trailer that they use for Chocolate Festival to use on their site, because there is no power in the area of the book box. Downtown Gadsden, Ms. Kay Moore, Ms. Mary Wood worked tirelessly on this event. Local talent, Mr. Albert Simpson, Lady Collins started the show, Four in the Fire came in to open, Ms. Anna Popovich, and I can't say enough about John Chevalier and his crew for the stage lighting and sound. They did a fantastic job, it's a blessing to have that talent in our backyard. The days leading up to and the day of the concert, I'd like to name some people that took some special details there. Ms. Jen Withington, once again, every time I turned around, she said, what do you need? And it happened. Parks and Rec, we are blessed to have the team that we do in that department. Mike Hilton, Court Barber, amazing support. Days coming into the event was fantastic. Our electricians for the city, Opie Teague and Mike Bramlett, they made the electrical hookups happen without having a power, coordinated everything, it was fantastic. Our EMS team that day, Assistant Chief Lysel Harrison, EMS Supervisor Will Reed were very instrumental in taking care of all the EMS support in case we had an event or an injury, and I'm glad to report we had zero incidents. Estimated the crowd that day at over 2,000. Our security detail was headed up by Sergeant Jerome Mitchell from the Gadsden Police Department that evening, and Lieutenant Tony Snow of Edward County Sheriff's Department. Once again, I want to thank Steve Gilbert for raising the funds, for making this event happen. I want to thank the City of Gadsden for providing the venue. Ms. Tina King of Kings Audible took care of the backstage mama details, and took care of everything with the entertainers. It was a pleasure to hear them say, do you guys think, when I said, do you think you guys will come back to Gadsden? And Anna Popovich said, actually, she said, come back, I think I want to live here. This is an event that we held, it's the first ever time we've done a downtown music festival in the area that it was, and the place that it was, and I personally think it was a huge success. So thank you for all of your support for this endeavor, and thank you for the support of future endeavors. Any questions?
Thank you, thank you, Robert. Thank you, we appreciate it, and I'll echo some of that sentiment. I appreciate you taking the time to highlight and capture several of the folks that supported and committed to it. You know, we, you know, many of us call Gadsden home for various reasons. You know, some of us are here because we didn't have a choice, some of us are here because we chose to be here, but at the end of the day, it is refreshing, always refreshing, to see people who have a passion for their city and are willing to go out and support events like this. You know, I think it's very telling that the city's role, while meaningful, wasn't necessarily the prominent role in developing this, so we didn't, wasn't a whole lot of taxpayer money thrown at this event, so it just says a lot about the organizing and the fundraising and all that went into it. So very good event, got a chance to attend it, and I, you know, I didn't want to put you on the spot while you were standing there, but my goal is that it would be an annual event of some kind. You know, I'd like to see, yeah, you can tell Steve I said that too, I'd like it to be an annual event. It's a great venue, and I think, you know, it's something that, we had about 2,000 people there, and it'd be good to see double that amount out next year, okay? So, all right, Ms. Jackson, you, you good? Amanda, nothing? Okay, all right. Thank you guys again, and Jen, thank you as well for the Parks and Rec Department. And Kay, thank you for all that you do, for sure. Remarks by the mayor and council?
I'm good.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You got Bobby? Mr. Cole, come on up.
Good morning, President Williams and to the council. Several weeks ago, I was here and I passed out some information concerning citizen participation and neighborhood association. I don't know if any of you got a chance to look at it before you put it in the trashcan, but I wanted to ask you, have you considered setting up neighborhood associations in each neighborhood? Each neighborhood would have a president, a vice president, and secretary, and they would have monthly meetings to discuss things within their neighborhood, issues or whatever, and so that way, each neighborhood would have a contact, and that would be the contact to the council person. So right now, we don't have that, so I just wondered, when you give your summations today, is that something that you think could happen and that you possibly would like to set up? Number two, several weeks ago, the mayor made mention of the packages that he gave to the police department, so in my mind, and possibly in your mind too, there's not going to be an entry level increase for the police officers. So the next idea that I have, and for your consideration, I know you would have to vote on this if this thing happened, is signing bonuses for individuals who want to be a police officer or firefighter. Since it's not going to be an entry level rate, in order to obtain better quality of people, then why not give them a signing bonus? So that's something you could consider, and I'd like you to think about that. I'm not going to take too much time today, because last time I was here, I got a little heated, but the third matter I wanted to discuss is that, and each one of you sitting up there, I have spoken to individuals in your district who has called me to ask me, when will the job for the Director of Parks and Recreation be posted? I told them I didn't know, because I had called personnel, and they don't have an idea, and I know the mayor is here today, but I notice his assistant is, you may know or may not know, but people are interested on when this job is going to be posted, and if it's going to be posted, when will it be posted? And since some of the people in your district are asking about this, I wondered if some of you council members would ask the mayor or his staff when the job would be posted. Also, I think the city council that do this are the mayor or in concert. Appoint a biracial committee, and on this biracial committee, most of the time, biracial committees are appointed when things happen. And so I am a person that believes in being proactive. If you was to appoint a biracial committee, then they could discuss things that may be bothersome to the community, or things that could help the community, and they could come back to you with suggestions and recommendations, and see whatever the problems are, if there are problems, I know some people say I'm the problem, but if you do appoint this committee, I think it would be a way to have better relations with the citizens of this city, and also have some young people on there too. So I'm going to be short, and my last thing is, I would like to announce on June the 28th, that police and fire department, the test will be given for those positions. There are five vacancies in the fire department, and only one, I think, right at Capitol, in the police department. So anyone who's interested in taking the test, it will be given June the 28th, from ages 19 to 44. I feel kind of shaky, it's real quiet in here today. I don't know if it's me or whatever, but I thank you all for this time, and everybody have a good day, and I would like to hear your response to the things I asked about.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Remarks by the council, Councilwoman Toles?
Yes, I have an announcement, the Edward County Democratic Women's Club, they're inviting you to, this is everyone, on Thursday, May the 4th, at 5:30 to Morana Park for a unity picnic, and they said, bring your family, dinner with us, and they'll have special prizes for, there'll be door prizes, and there'll be special prizes for the member that brings the most gifts, and they'll have entertainment. Probably I can address one or two. One of the things you said about the community associations, I believe that there are communities that have those associations, some of them probably need to be activated, but they do exist in some communities where there are neighborhood associations. The people just need to express an interest themselves. The other thing is, you talked about a biracial committee. I'm not that, I'm not sure about that, but I'm going to say this. I know four or five districts up here have community meetings, and at the community meetings, everybody in that district can come and express their concerns, they can give ideas, they can give suggestions, but we have, you know, I have a nice crowd, but people that are calling you are not the ones that are coming to the community meetings. So I suggest that we announce when we have community meetings, they can come to the community meeting, they can express their concerns, they can talk about their wants and their dislikes, and we can address them up here if at all possible.
Councilman Worth?
Yes, you know, I'm all for the fire department, police department. I wish they could make more money, but the administration might have to do that, and then we can vote on it. So, because that's going to be a problem, and I don't think anybody's going to come here and make the kind of money that they make, and then after 25 years, you don't have any insurance, because they won't pay for your insurance after 25 years of working. So, you know, I've talked to them about that, but we haven't gotten anywhere. But I want to go to Ms. Jen, you know, my boys participated in the fishing rodeo when they were kids, and that's been going on for a long time. A lot of people said we don't have anything in this community, in this city for people to do, but there's a lot of stuff going on in the community. You know, they posted in the paper, I know a lot of people don't get the paper, but if you listen to us up here, we talk about it. There's a lot going on in the community, people just have to get out and participate. You know, we had the concert over the weekend, we have one coming up this weekend, so it's stuff to do. We got First Saturday coming up, I implore people to come to First Saturday, you know? We have white people to come down there also, it's not just a black thing, just like First Friday's just not a white person issue, you know, black people come up there, people of color, so everything is not black and white, everything is not about racism. We know, we're not crazy, we know racism exists, and it's going to always exist, till the good Lord come back, but that doesn't stop us, that doesn't stop anybody in our community from going over to Gadsden City, getting a good education, getting a job you can do, whatever you want to do. You know, we have job fairs for people, so we are trying to do stuff. A lot of people in this community said that we're not doing anything, the council's not doing anything. Come to our community meetings and tell us what you would like for us to do. If you know how the city government works, we are strong mayor, weak council, form of government. And the people that's on the radio, these talking heads that's talking, they, as long as they've been here in this city, they should know how the city works. We don't have any control over any personnel in this city, the council, except for that lady sitting right there. We vote on her, that's it. Ms. Ivanelson, the city clerk, that's the only person we have control of. Legally, we cannot say anything to any employee unless the mayor give us permission to. Legally, yes, yes it is. We cannot tell them to do anything.
No, you can't do that.
Okay, so, but anyway, I want to thank the city for what we are doing, we are trying to do a good job, we're not perfect, but we're going to continue to do what we do. If you all, you know, some people don't like it, you run for office. I implore you, it's only $50 to sign, to feed, to register to run, that's all you have to pay, it's $50. Run. Thank you.
Councilman Billingson?
No comment.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes, I'd like to tell Mr. Cole, we have a community meeting in my district, it's the first Monday of every month, Bank's Park, it starts at 5:00 or 5:30, we have it done. I don't go a lot to them, I've got Mr. Bob Minner, he heads that one up down there, he lives down that way, and he can tell me everything that goes, I probably go to half of them, and he does the rest, because a lot of times when I'm there, they won't say a lot, you know? When I'm not there, they're going to tell you what they want and what they need, and he either calls City Hall and communicates through them, or communicates through me, you know, to find out what they need.
First Monday.
Yes, first Monday, first Tuesday, we change that, depends on if there's a holiday, you know, it's the next day, on Monday, so, yes, you can go by the gazebo now, about to see a sign that flashes up that tells you exactly when it's going to be that month, it's 5:00 or 5:30, and he was talking about signing bonuses. That'd be a good thing, but he never mentioned how much and how long the person has to stay here to get them. I'm not in favor of giving somebody a $1,000 sign-on bonus, and goes to the fire academy or the police academy, quits the next week, you know, I'm not, goes to another town, I'm not for that, but I would like to look into it, how much you would want, and they'd have to stay a certain length of time, or they'd have to pay that back, not just give somebody a sign-on bonus and let them, you know, go. And that's about all I've got.
Councilman Reed?
Just sitting here listening to Robert and Kay, I got that letter about, what, 34 weeks ago, that said they want anything to do in Gadsden, Alabama. I think if you listen just to that part, they pretty well told you that. But if you don't got nothing else to do, this is what I do, I go over to Walmart and sit and watch the people.
I agree.
And you can't find nothing else to do, okay? I want to thank y'all for the Patriots God, and let you know, it was really, really, Robert had a big part of that also, made good money, y'all were part of that. But I just want to let you know that the money goes toward the banquet in November, where we honor the Henri's that are over there, over in the hall bar, we do the fireworks on due Latin folk. The flags that you see up and down, Aber Rains and Megan Boulevard, and over at the courthouse, and then possibly here, you're going to see a whole lot more, but it's money that goes for good stuff. The whole Lemass Park on the mountain, plus the museum. Have any of y'all been to the museum? The Gadsden Edward Patriots Museum and Nakalula Park? You'd be surprised, it's an Oscar, is it Oscar channel?
Six, five.
Yes, six, whatever. Anyway, it's something, really, see, it's something we sponsor, we do public. Anybody, just want to thank y'all for that, and May the 11th, on Wall, we'll be here. At 12 noon, we'll be doing the ceremonies, which will be short, and it'll be a very, very nice situation for the veterans and their family, May the 11th.
Could I ask Councilman Reed a question? For those people who would like to have flags along the meridian that honor their veterans that are deceased, how could they go about getting a flag that would be, that would represent their, the veterans that are passed on in their family?
Yeah, their loved ones.
Glencoe, Glencoe, Alabama, I know does that, at present time, we don't. Ours are eight feet high, four to eight flags, they're big. We have dozens of them, so and so forth. What I say you can do, the Patriots, we do offer the sign, and every time we have a function or anything, that sign is in honor of the veteran, your dad, your brother, whoever, and I think that's a hundred dollar, and that's your prayer.
Okay. All right, thanks, Councilman Reed. I think it's important to note also that Councilman Reed was educated in Georgia school system, so if he didn't know how many sides.
Well, I tell you what I do, that's my count of my things.
I hear you, I hear you. I'm going to, for anybody that's interested, I'm going to put up here some flyers that we, or some brochures that we got this morning, again, along the same lines of, there's nothing to do in the city. There's some prominent landmarks and trails in the city, whether you're talking about wineries, golf, barbecue trails, Nakalula Falls, craft beer. in our city, but at the end of the day, it's still our city. And so, I think it's important for us to take every effort to make it as prominent and as pleasant as it can possibly be. So, I want to thank those who do that. I want to thank those who actually go out and get involved and drive the effort to make sure that your city is as good as it can potentially be. And again, these are up here for people to look at, take, they're available in a lot of different places, and thanks to our tourism board and a number of the folks that actually do that stuff for us. Reminder about the National Day of Prayer, that's an event that's going to be held at the downtown civic center on Thursday morning, May fourth. I think it starts at, registration starts at seven-thirty, the event starts at eight, I believe, so please, please go out and support that event. And I think we'll have a Supreme Court justice there as the speaker. And I think that's it. Does anybody else have anything? Okay. If there's nothing else, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I wanted to say that I was just told that the breakfast is from seven to eight, the program begins at eight, it seems, because of the...
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Marcia. That's from seven to eight is when it begins, and breakfast begins at eight, is what you said?
Program begins at eight.
Program begins at eight. Okay. I do appreciate that. Okay? If there's nothing else, again, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
I'm off.